I'd like to start off this evening with, how about introducing ourselves? Who's present, please?
I'm Brian Rose. I'm the zoning administrator.
Phil DeBancis, election.
Gail LeBruck, recording secretary.
Brian Hanson.
Barbara Griffin.
Richard Meany.
And I'm John Heikel. I'll be chairing this evening's meeting. We have a, we have some minutes that we'd like to vote on from-
Motion to approve the minutes. Second amendment.
Motion by Richard, second by Phil. Speak your motion, comments, questions?
Page fifteen. The one above the motion at the bottom of the page, the second sentence, the last word, instead of acres, should be cows.
Which, which section is that again?
Page fifteen.
Yep.
Above, the bottom of the pages is, I'm sorry, it says, the map four lots is in bold, but it's the second sentence above the, too bolded. At the bottom, the last word is acres and it should be cows.
Okay.
I didn't see that one. Anyone else? Okay. Want to take a vote? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Two abstained, three ayes. Okay, motion passes. We've got, I take up something from last week. Now, might as well do it.
Yeah. So, if you want, I can-
Yeah, if you would, now, speak to it, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Last meeting, we had the applicant for Shirley Farm here to add a dairy. They had applied for a site plan. And the planning board during the meeting took action, but it was action to approve solely the gray water system, was not action to approve their application. Their application is for a site plan. And so, it is my feeling that the board should clarify what approvals are being granted. I don't believe that an application for gray water system was applied for, and I don't believe that I can issue building permits based on approval of a gray water system that was never applied for. It was part of a site plan application, and I believe that site plan application really needs to have action on it. We do have a sixty-five day clock that if we don't take action on, it opens us up for a lawsuit, actually. If, if a site plan application has been accepted and is being under review, but no action is taken, it, it opens the town up for legal action against that. I did invite the Shirlies back tonight to be here to speak to any concerns that you may have. I know it's not a public hearing, but I wanted them to at least be here to answer any questions that you might have. But, that's, that's kind of the gist of what, what I'd like to talk about tonight, so. Anyway, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Phil. We, do we have any questions? Any comments?
All right, sorry, one more, one more thing, too. I know last week we had had concerns, or the board had had concerns about, you know, making a limitation on the number of cows or the number of animals on the property. It would be my recommendation that the board, as part of their approval of the site plan, not, or specifically make a statement that there would be no limitation on number of animals that could be kept on this farm by approving their site plan. That way, it allows them to continue, you know, holding other types of animals, horses, geese, ducks, whatever they want to hold or keep. And additional cows, too, you know, whether they be beef, you know, steers, steers and whatever.
Steers or cows. I know we spent a lot of time talking about this last week. Are you okay with that, Phil?
I have no comment.
You have no comment? Okay. Comment? Any motions?
I wasn't here for the discussion. I got most of my information from the newspaper and the minutes.
Okay. Well, would like to take action on this this evening? You have a question?
Well, I just have a comment. I voted against the motion last week that was ultimately made and seconded because I didn't think it was an appropriate motion. The motion was to approve the gray water system. It was seconded, there was further discussion, and I voted against it because I don't think we were in the business of voting on actual systems. And I had make a, had, had made a motion to approve the application to include the hand-drawn site plan that was part of the application and the, and to include the information provided by the applicant in their email. I don't know whether it came in as correspondence separately or what, because they had provided more information that day as to the actual system that I think was referred to in the newspaper article. And, and in doing so, approve all the waivers that they had requested in conjunction, well, we had accepted the application, so we had approved the waivers. And that motion that I made was on page thirteen of the minutes. And I do think it would be appropriate to simply have a site plan on the lot without restriction on two-footed, four-footed, three-footed beings, because I think it would be appropriate if, it's appropriate for a change in use, it would be appropriate for a new use. And I don't think, I didn't get the impression that anybody at the meeting last week was opposed to the operation or the application. I think we got sort of sidetracked on the gray water and the number of feet that we're going to be moving on the site. Because we never, nobody even actually talked about the hand-drawn site plan, which was frankly, one of our better hand-drawn site plans, because it had been done to scale. It was actually quite good. So, I would like to just resolve the matter in its entirety with the hope that someone else would make the motion that I was unsuccessful with last week. Just that, yeah.
Would someone like to make that motion?
Did we want to, can we just go to that and we don't need applicants to-
It's not noticed, it's a public hearing. The plan administrator has brought it forward again. They just want to get going.
If I, if, if this is kosher with you there, Ms. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the application, including the hand-drawn site plan from the applicant, and include the information provided by the applicant in their email from the last meeting regarding the wastewater system and maintenance.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Richard, seconded from Barbara.
Does the motion also want to include the statement about not limiting any kind of-
It's not in there.
It's not in there, so there's, you know, infant number of animals possible. I'm not going to catch a condition of feet or horns or heads or anything.
If you approve a barn, you're, on agricultural land, you don't approve the number of horses.
I, I just think if you make the statement clear in your motion, then no one in the future can go back to the minutes and say, "Well, they said twelve cows, so somehow they're limited by a statement that they made in their, in their..."
I prefer to have as few words as possible, because the more words there are, the more serious construction and interpretation can occur.
Right. Few words is better. They have all the rights and let them, we don't need to restrict us any further. Are we okay with that motion?
I second it.
Okay. Any more discussion on that motion? Questions, comments? Take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero. Approved.
Thank you.
The site plan. Thank you. Next on the agenda. Let's move the applicants. Map seventeen. That's where we are. We can do the conservation commission, the last certification. Map seventeen, lot two thirty-one, completeness review, conditional use permit review, hearing for proposal to build a seven-foot by twenty-four-foot porch approximately nineteen point one zero feet from the front property line, whereas a twenty-five-foot setback is required. The property is owned by Desault Family Trust, sixty-six Lewis Street, Zoned R2. Brian, do you want to discuss this one?
Yes. So, this is one of those very quirky moments where the zoning, the planning board gets to deal with something that the zoning board usually deals with, that's a setback issue. There, there is a little five-star asterisk at the bottom of our table of dimensional regulations that basically just says you can get less setback or more footprint by applying for a conditional use permit through the planning board if you're in the residential two-zone and you're asking for a front setback, relief from the front setback requirement. So, what the applicants are here tonight to do is to build a seven-foot by twenty-four-foot covered front porch in their front setback area. And you hopefully have received their application in your packet. And I didn't write on my report what the distance to the front setback, or to the front property line was, but I know it's on there.
Oh, all right.
Nineteen, as close as nineteen point one feet.
Which I'm assuming doesn't include these steps.
It doesn't include the step, however, when I looked at it, I asked them that question on, on the telephone, and they said there was just going to be one granite step. To me, I didn't really think a granite step was necessarily part of the structure itself, so I felt like that could remain as-is. So, basically, that's what they're here to do. They're here to obtain a conditional use permit. When you are looking at these criteria, you would evaluate that based on all your normal criteria for conditional use permits. And I'm, in the interest of Barbara and her time-
Stop it, everyone! Come on!
I won't go through each one of those criteria. I, I rarely do that anyway, so I'm not going to do it tonight either. But, you know, basically, the criteria are making sure that the application is not, is going to be compatible with the neighborhood, and it's not going to have any kind of detrimental effects to the neighbors. So, my recommendation would be accept the conditional use permit application as complete, find that there is no regional impact, hear a presentation from the applicant, hold the public hearing that's required for conditional use permits, resolve any remaining issues you find or feel that there are. And then, again, my recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit to allow the proposed addition, three, seven hundred and thirty-eight, sorry, the three-season porch, wait a second. That's from my other report, I think. So, to allow the seven-by-twenty-four porch, seven-foot by twenty-four-foot porch to be built within the setback as close as nineteen point one feet, as, as shown on their plot plan. And forget what says in my report.
Questions, Phil?
There's a question for Brian. Brian, under detail of the proposed porch, when you look at it, it shows two steps off the front, and Barbara's question was the step and one piece of granite. Only concern I have is that if we approve these plans, one drawing shows two steps coming off, and I just wouldn't want the applicant to have the problem.
Yeah. We can, we can ask the applicant to speak to that. I mean, I, I'm not exactly sure what the height is of, you know, where the ground level is and, and what the need for steps is. And I know this, the, the person here who's representing the applicant, or the property owner tonight, is their builder, so I think he probably will have a pretty decent understanding of, of where that is. But, we can, we can always have him revise it if necessary, or if we ha, if, if we find that it's needed, then, you know, we can always renotice it and, you know, redo it. But, that, when I, when I spoke to them on the phone, that was the statement that they gave me, so.
I, if I can follow up on that, I guess, thus, I brought the steps up, because I wanted to sort of know whether I'm looking at the edge here or if there's another edge.
That was my question as well. And, and, you know, they had actually provided an alternative drawing, and that's why I originally brought it up, because there was one drawing that showed the steps going off to the side of the porch, and another one that showed the steps coming off the front. And I was like, "Okay, well, which one am I working with here? And am I going to have an issue with setbacks that are closer than what you're showing on your drawing?"
Right.
So, that's, those are the two issues that I asked about. And I, I basically said, "Okay, granite step, yeah, that could probably slide." Or if you're going off the side, that could easily slide, but that's not what this drawing shows, so that was why.
And I guess the other thing is, is that, not, and I, I noticed that Dawn isn't, Dawn Duval isn't here, who did this. I guess I'm just looking at it, and there are things that are closed in within the setback along there. I, I understand that, but I guess when I'm looking at this, I'd want some sort of certification when it's done, that it's within whatever we approved.
Right.
I mean, I don't need a new plan, you know, I don't need anything new, but I would want some certification that it was-
Typically, when it's something like this, where they're going to a spec, a specific, you know, distance to the property line, we'll have them mark it out and mark where the property line is so that we can go out and check before it's all totally built.
And, and I'll just tell you that, you know, I would, I mean, we need to resolve the steps in the presentation, but I'm probably not going to make a motion for nineteen point one feet. You know, I think probably nineteen is sufficient-
Acceptable.
-or something, you know, to try and make this a little reasonable. So, anyways, those would be my comments before we hear the presentation.
Say that you're rounding down.
Any other comments from the board? The applicant is here tonight?
Mm-hmm.
The applicant would like to-
I want to make a motion and accept them.
Yes. Yes, did we, yes.
I'll make a motion to, to accept the conditional use permit for map seventeen, lot two thirty-one, as complete, and find there's no regional impact.
Second. No.
Have a comment on that? Number seventeen isn't checked out?
I'm behind it. I'm, I was ahead of it.
Seems easy enough to fix, wouldn't you say, Brian?
Uh, yeah. You can ask the applicant to address it, your application.
I'll just fix it. Okay. I don't think the appro, I don't think our discussion hinges on that one way or another. Since this is just one lot.
Well, we are voting on whether it's subject to complete.
Okay.
You could also make a determination, I guess, that it's not applicable in this case. I don't know.
Would someone like to make a motion?
We have one, we have one in the second. There's already one, and it's seconded.
Okay. But who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I did.
Barbara did, and Richard's.
Subject to clarification, and number seventeen is my second amendment also.
Sure.
Moving things for things.
Okay.
All right. Comments on that? Questions? Vote on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero. Great, please. Now we can hear from the applicant.
Another question, what do you read?
Yeah, Sarah, come up here, sit down, give your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Donald DeRusso, and I live in one-twenty-one Limeboro Road in Boston, and I'm the owner of Construct Plus. I'm representing the Dussos tonight, because Mr. Dussos is ill tonight. And I, do you want me to address the question on the stair?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a free-floating granite step that sits on compact gravel, and it's just one step down. And if that doesn't work, then I'll just slope up the land to make it step down onto the walkway. It's not a wood structure, and it's not fastened to the building, so it's just either-or. You could either do the slope with a brick walkway, or we can do a granite step.
Do, do you have the drawing? Do you, do you know what we're talking about?
I know exactly. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
When we look at the two steps?
Yes.
Okay.
When I drew it up, we didn't know where the grade was at the, you know, so I just drew it up for the, for the actual building permit. But actually, it is one step.
Okay. Sir, where is the grade in relation to the front door?
The grade is probably down, probably, it'll be a seven-inch step down, approximately seven-and-a-half inch step down to the deck. So, it's probably about twenty-four, twenty-two inches down. So, all we have to do is raise, we're going to raise the grade in the front, because we don't want a lot exposed in front of the house.
So, that, so that granite step you're going to put in there is something like probably thirteen inches deep?
Eighteen inches, eighteen inches or so by probably four feet wide.
Okay.
We have to slope the, we have to bring the slope up, the slope, you know, the rainwater away to the, to the sides, anyway, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like to keep, would you like more of a presentation? Do you have anything else to add?
Pretty, the, we put an addition on the existing house that was there, and that was at that original setback.
Okay.
And then when we designed it, it landed up with the living room, needed a front door there. There was no front door in the original old building that was built there.
Mm-hmm.
It was on the driveway side and in the rear. So, we built the house, there's a, the living room's in the middle, so we needed an exit. And then that's when they decided they liked to have it, you know, a porch and covered.
Sure.
And that's the reason why we're discussing this.
All right. So, if I look at this drawing where it says proposed addition-
That's already, that was approved.
That's already there.
Yeah, that's all built.
So, this needs to be changed to-
To approve.
Right. Because the only thing that's, needs to be done now is this porch piece, right?
Yeah, exactly.
That should be existing structure.
Right.
What, what they did was they took the, the, the best plot plan that they could come up with out of the building file, and they just kind of drew on to it.
No, I, I understand that, but for purposes of our approval, I think that needs to be changed.
Oh, right.
It's all one, because it's all existing.
It's all existing.
Right.
So, the proposed addition and that line there need to be removed, and then the fact we're only looking at a proposed porch makes much more sense.
Should be existing addition.
Okay, can I exist?
Sure.
I can have Dawn Duval go back out, resurvey it after it's built, give you a certified plot plan exactly where it is, and he can remove the wording on the-
Okay.
-existing plot plan if you'd like.
All right, that's fine.
Okay.
If you want, do you want to get an answer, number seventeen?
Nope. I'm good.
Okay. You're all good with seventeen?
I'm good.
I'm fine with it.
I'm satisfied.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Was it approved?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
Can't leave yet.
You need to-
Do I stay, or?
Yeah.
It'll be done in a second.
Won't be long.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Any, anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? I don't see any, so, thank you. Let's close the public hearing, close all the hearings, and let's get back to the board. Any motions on this application?
I move to approve the conditional use permit as presented for text for map number seventeen, lot number twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Any additions to that?
Lot two, two thirty-one, isn't it?
Lot two thirty-one, R2, yeah.
Map seventeen, lot two thirty-one. Excuse me. Yeah, two thirty-one.
Okay. And in doing that, are you making the findings as presented in the town administrator's report, A through F?
The town administrator's report?
Of the, the planning, I-
I know, we got to get out of here, Barbara.
I've had a long couple of weeks in court. All right. As in, and I took an allergy pill today, I should have never done it.
Aren't you supposed to disregard all that stuff? Isn't that what he said?
Are we entering this into the record?
Well, I think if we're approving a conditional use permit, you're supposed to make certain findings.
Still supposed to make the findings, I just didn't go through them each.
Okay, so these, these findings were applicable to this one, not the next one.
Right.
Yes, they're applicable to any conditional use.
Oh, yeah, that's right. It was just that part that was not applicable.
Oh, right, yeah, sorry.
And so, I think the motion should include those. I think it also needs to include that it's a granite, a, a single granite step at the proposed porch.
Do we need a distance in there?
Well, I think what we're doing is letting the proposed, the granite step slide, but that the porch itself is going to be as depicted or not closer than nineteen feet.
That's what I meant.
Right. I'm adding conditions.
Right.
So, the single granite step, but the porch structure itself is not closer than nineteen feet, and that a certified plot plan with the distances and correction of the house notations is submitted after completion.
So, if they amend their motion and second, then we're good, right?
Yes, you amended your motion. Yeah, okay.
Maintain my motion with the amendments that Barbara just mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right. Second is maintained. Okay. Uh, great. Any comments, questions? Speak to those motions. Let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, approved. No, yes, abstained, approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're kidding?
Map, uh, let's see. Map seven, lot fifty, completeness review, conditional use permit review, hearing for proposal to build a seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight square foot addition to an existing single-family home within the outer fifty feet, fifty-foot buffer of the wetland surface water conservation district. The addition will be built eighty-three feet from the edge of the nearby surface water, whereas a hundred feet is required. The property is owned by Michael and Judith Mason, one ninety-eight Gorham Pond Road, Zoned Agricultural.
Okay.
Brian would like to speak on this one, please.
Yes, please.
Here we are.
Okay, so this is the project at one hundred, one ninety-eight Gorham Pond Road. They've applied for, again, a conditional use permit. It's kind of strange, we've had two conditional use permits that, on the same night, but this is for basically a small addition to their home, and it's within the wetland surface water conservation district, or some of it is. And basically, what it consists of is a change in layout that covers five-hundred-and-fifty-six square feet, of which two-hundred-and-four is an addition to the livable space. So, two-hundred-and-four square feet is going to bump out further than what they currently have. The rest will be interior changes of that five-hundred-and-fifty-six. Then, in addition to that, they are also enclosing a one-hundred-and-eighty-foot, square-foot area, or really, they're making a three-season room in an area where there's currently a deck. So, they're going to actually remove the entire deck and put a three-season room in the, in the same location where that was. I, I recommend there's no regional impact on this, and they have requested one waiver, and that's for the delineation of the wetland surface water conservation district on their plan. They did include a copy of the old subdivision plan that also shows where their existing house and structures are. So the plot plan kinda depicts where their, their three-season, three-season room and the porch addition, or the, uh, the other two hundred and four square-foot addition will be. And they also have outlined in black where there is the brook that runs along the side of their property. That brook is as close as eighty-three feet to the closest corner, eighty-five feet on the other side, and, um, so it's still a fair distance away from the wetland resource. We did put this to our conservation commission for them to review and comment on this, since it had to do with the, what the wetland surface water conservation district. And their comments came back that they didn't feel like it was gonna be any kind of negative impact on the wetland, it was pretty far away, and it, their, their house is on kind of a flat area, and then it goes for a while, and then it slopes down.
Pretty steep.
I think you have some photos in your, in your packets that sort of depict it. I'm not sure if Patty colored, copied them color or not, but, um, anyway. So their recommendation was favorable to applying, to approving this application. Now, um, I'll run through my recommendations. So the first recommendation would be to waive the wetland surface water district, first, surface water conservation district delineations as a plan requirement, since the existing subdivision plan shows where the wetland is. And simply with taking a scale, I mean, you can tell where the, how, how close the structure really is, so. Second recommendation is to accept the conditional use permit as, the application as complete, and find that there is no regional impact. And then hear from the applicant to do a presentation.
I am sorry to interrupt, my alarm went off. If I leave, do we have a quorum?
Yes.
Yes.
I have to leave.
Okay.
I'll be back.
Take your vest.
We won't be here.
Yeah, it might be over by the time you're back. Good luck, Phil.
Good parts and the bad parts, because you don't know if it's a false or not.
See ya.
Okay, so after the applicant's presentation, to then hold a public hearing, and then the resolution from the board of any remaining issues. And then my recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit to allow the proposed seven hundred and thirty-eights square foot addition and three-season porch to be built within the outer fifty feet of the wetland surface water conservation district overlay district, and find the normal conditional use permit findings, as well as one additional finding at the end, which is the thirteen point three point four, is the functions, values, and condition of the wetland resources will not be compromised as a result of the proposed project. And that's the language that we find in our zoning ordinance, where it gives authority to the planning board to grant a conditional use permit. They, they require that finding as well, in addition to all the other findings that the board makes when granting conditional use permits. So with that, I will turn it back to the board.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Can I please ask you a quick question?
Certainly can.
Would our justification for that last amendment be from this, um, this surface water buffer report?
Well, this, the wetlands, the certified wetland scientist that wrote the report actually did address that in the report. I, I noticed that he uses that exact language. And so, you know, he felt that it would not negatively impact the, again, the functions, values, and condition of the wetland resources.
Great.
So.
Because I'm definitely not qualified to make that, you know.
Any other questions? Any motions?
Sure. I move that we waive section two, E, two D, three B. As a plan requirement, since the existing subdivision plan shows the wetland.
Second that.
Okay. Motion from Richard, second from Brian. Comments, questions on that? Speak your motion. Take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained, four zero?
I move that we accept the conditional use permit application as complete, and find that there is no regional impact.
Second that.
Motion from Richard, second from Brian. Any questions, comments? Vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained, four zero? Uh, let's hear from the applicant. Is the applicant?
Yep.
Every time that's in there, I look it up, and then I forget. You see this, if I pin it up here?
Sure.
Good evening, board members, my name is Barry Giffett, All American Builders out of Bedford. With me here tonight, Mike and Judy Mason, they are the property owners at one eighty-nine Gorham Pond Road, excuse me, one ninety-eight Gorham Pond Road. This is a depiction of the addition, the existing dwelling is a single-family Cape. The addition is going onto the back right-hand corner of the property. Here's the back right corner of the Cape, and if you come in off of the corner sixteen feet, and you come out twenty-two feet, and come across the back twenty-eight feet, which will be the gable wall, come back seventeen, twelve, then five, and that is an L shape right there, and that will be a full foundation addition. And here, this little five-by-twelve L cove, which I'm gonna incorporate, is where the existing deck is now. I'm gonna take that off, frame this in, carry the rafters all the way across here, and that will encompass the sunroom. We'll be able to access the sunroom from the existing gable wall in the house, which currently has a sliding door. We'll access the sunroom here, we'll not have any other access from the bedroom. And then we'll have a, an entrance off of this onto a small landing and deck, excuse me, small landing and staircase. This is gonna be a bedroom, master bedroom, there's gonna be a three-quarter bathroom in this corner here. The distance to the property line from the closest point will be fifty-five feet, and from this point is eighty-three feet to the brook. The hundred-foot setback, when Brian and I were taking a look at the, what's it called, GIC map, or?
GIS.
GIS map. When we looked at that map, when it was changed from fifty feet to a hundred feet, it automatically put the existing house into the hundred-foot setback, by about three feet, we scaled it out. This dotted line here basically shows the one hundred-foot setback, so from here over on the addition will be outside the setback. So the total addition inside the one hundred feet is gonna be four hundred and fifty square feet.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant from the board?
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Does that depiction match this depiction?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
All right, I'm having a hard time with it, but as long as it's telling.
Let me, let me turn that around for you here. It'll be just like this, this is the street down here. This is the addition.
Right.
Okay, this is the L shape on the addition, this is this right here. This is the foundation, this is, that causes the L, and this is the sunroom that's gonna be coming on. So that is, this is the sunroom right here.
Okay, because the scale just looks completely different here as compared to there.
Well, it's actually, I didn't show you the entire house, so what I did here was just showed you the small corner of the house. The house actually carries out here, and then goes down into here, so you have quite a.
I'm like, looking at this drawing going, this is a different plan than I'm looking at.
Any questions?
Any other questions? Very good, thank you. And is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this?
These two.
Are you okay with it? All right, good. We'll close that public hearing. Seeing as there is no, no hope there to speak. Board, what was like to do with this?
You ready for motions?
Ready for motions.
Okay. I move that we approve a conditional use permit to allow the proposed seven hundred and thirty-eight square foot addition and three-season porch to be built within the outer fifty feet of the hundred-foot wetland service water conservation overlay district, and find that, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the seven findings listed by the town planning officer. Period.
Second that.
Okay. Everyone's okay with that motion? Any comments, questions on that motion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained, four nothing? That passes. Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. Brian, do you should save originals?
Do you have the original?
Are they? Good luck, good luck.
They sure like it.
Thank you, good luck, yes.
I think it's just a really good color copy. Okay.
All right, just making sure.
They're in color. That's probably why you think.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, what about this, what about starting? Yeah, we have, well, we have this here, need to start considering the zoning changes for two thousand and fourteen.
Basically, that's a statement.
Yeah.
I'd like to bring it up next meeting. So I don't wanna necessarily start into a whole list of whatever. I do have, um, a good start of a list of things that, you know, I think need to be addressed. But, let me type them up, I've jotted them on a piece of, you know, yellow pad paper, and I don't wanna give you that. So.
When, when you present them next time, will you be able to present us with a, a draft schedule of what, at what meeting we're going to discuss these things, and what, and when we plan on voting on them?
Well, I, I mean, it's the first meeting in December, that's basically when we would do our first public hearing. We would want to, though, between now and then, probably have, you know, next meeting plus at least maybe one more before we get to that point, so we can kinda iron out what, what things we should be moving forward, and, you know, how, how we want them to move forward.
In other words, if you're looking for submissions by, I don't know what the first meeting in November is, let's just say it's November tenth, but if you're looking for submissions by November tenth from the planning board, um, let us know.
Yeah. Because we'll need to do a public hearing notice.
Right.
By, I think it's maybe the fifteenth of, I'm not, can't remember what the date is on the December meeting. But we'll need at least, you know, fifteen days, I think, is the time period for making those notifications, or ten, it's ten days, but you add a couple more days in for clear days on either side, and I always usually just give it fifteen, that way it's easy and clear, and you're not gonna have any disputes. So, yeah, please be also thinking of, like, I'm gonna have my list, but I know the planning board may have some ideas as to what, you know, things that they would like to change or see done. So, you know, feel free to submit. I know last year, or, I don't know if it was last year or two years ago, we dealt with several of the ones that Richard had submitted. So, you know, I thought that was good to have somebody on the board actually working through it, and, you know, coming up with suggested changes. You know, I don't know if we wanna pull out the chicken one again or not, but.
You'll see the chicken, one again revised.
I'm gonna bring one in for the egg, and we'll just have it out, finally solve that.
Yes. By government eat it.
Finally.
I wasn't, I wasn't gonna bring the chicken one thing, just because I figured maybe Richard's gonna.
You are, really? Great.
I guess I have to get into the gender of the foul.
Really?
This year.
I think you just require the egg to come first, and that'll take care of it.
So, um, with, so that's one thing. The other thing is, at one of the past selectmen's meetings, uh, they've been discussing still Plan Penardville and the SMART code. They basically threw it out to me and said, hey, talk to your planning board, and, you know, do you guys wanna even hash it out here, and?
Hash what out?
Well, the, the people from the public are basically asking that the planning board takes some sort of action that decides, you know, on the SMART code portion of the project. Even though, you know, we did get a letter from New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority saying, yeah, we accept your statement that you've completed the project, you know, to the, to the extent that you can. There's people out there that still feel that the SMART code basically needs to be denied in order for everything to be.
Or it needs to be voted on.
And, devote, right, voted on.
I'm not voting on anything that's not in front of me, and it has no way to get in front of me, because the project isn't going forward. So I don't know what we're doing, spending more time on it.
Here's what I, here's what I think. I don't know that we have to have any kind of public hearing on this. I think the planning board can, if, if I at least give you whatever the consultant gave me, and then you look at it and say, yeah, I wanna put this toward, to the ballot, or I don't wanna put it to the ballot, and similar to our other discussion items of zoning.
Quite frankly, Brian, I don't even wanna see that.
Well.
We, we voted on Plan Penardville, we didn't, and I disagreed with the motion, because I felt it stopped SMART code right in its tracks. It's done, because that's what we moved. If someone else wants to present a zoning change, and it happens to be the same as what came up as the SMART code, well, that's one thing, because that is part of the public meeting that occurred on Plan Penardville. But I will tell you, I don't wanna see a presentation of anything as SMART code, because I think you run into grant issues, you run into funding issues, you run into a host of issues, and you make it more complicated by continuing to refer to it as a SMART code at a Plan Penardville. And if there is a proposition to change the zoning for down there in accordance with it, that's a different thing, coming from an independent source.
I, I, I will tell you frankly, I don't, I didn't really feel like it was, you know, worth it.
I know, you're bringing it, yeah, I mean, the selectmen are bringing it up, so you're bringing it to us, and I'm apparently determined to stay here longer than I wanted to, so.
Well, I mean, was that apropos of the comment you said about, now's the time to bring in any, you know, any motions we might have in the future? For instance, the chicken, you know, the chicken issue? I mean, is that, is that the same sort of thing? You want us to sort of review the ideas if we have, if we wanna bring back some certain aspects of that? Is that why you brought that up at the same time?
I'm just, I'm just bringing it up as a separate item that needed to sort of get thrown out to you, as a board.
So it's gonna get thrown out on the twenty-fourth? Is that the plan?
Well, I, it's up to you, like, I think you guys, as a board, should sort of decide, you know, do we wanna see this, or do we not? Because frankly, I think it's really up to you guys, anyway.
I agree with Barbara, if somebody came in through the normal channels with, with an idea, then of course we give it its due respect, but at this point, unless somebody, unless we're talking about something specific, I can't see what we're talking about. Maybe you should ask the selectmen to be a little more specific about exactly what they'd like us to do, and we would give it its proper consideration.
I can tell you, it's because people are reading the grant agreement and feeling that there's some piece of work that's still not fulfilled as part of the grant agreement. And, you know, I think with a statement from New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, and the state, what, what happened was, the board of selectmen, and they read it, they read the letter in to you guys. read the letter into you guys, actually. We wrote, we wrote the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority a letter saying, you know, we feel like this project's done. And the selectmen got a letter back from New Hampshire Housing, which got read into this planning board record right after we got it. Said, yeah, we accept this statement, and, you know, whatever you need to do to finalize out the project, do it, and, you know, we're good. I mean, that's, people are feeling, though, that we're still not good, for whatever reason. I don't know.
Well, I think, 'cause they read the grant agreement, from what I'm understanding from them, they read the grant agreement, and they feel that there's two parts to that. One is the SMART code, and one is the, and one is the Plan Penardville, and they're not convinced that what you're saying to them is accurate, that it's actually not split, that there are two parts, and they're concerned that one part is still gonna, is still gonna exist if the other one isn't voted on. And I don't...
I cannot deal with people who read contracts differently than the head of the agency of the state tells me exists. And I cannot deal, I cannot deal, when I say deal with people, I cannot deal with a motion before me, because people read a contract and, and want us to return the money. Because let's not talk about this as a SMART code issue. That is where the, it, it is going, is people want the money returned, because they think there is a hook in this grant application. And, you know, it is not a planning board issue, in my opinion, at this time, and if people have made it a political issue, and if they wanna continue to do that, they can do so. But from a planning perspective, we no longer have an open application for anything in regards to this grant, right? There's nothing else there, from a planning perspective.
The planning boards denied, or not accepted, at least, they not approved the, I think that was the motion, to not approve the master plan.
You know, and it, you know, I can tell you from having served on the board of selectmen, if you wanna read every word of every contract you sign, including things that you do personally, and to try to address every potential provision in them, you'll never get through with your first car financing agreement.
Yeah.
You just wouldn't get through it.
Or a credit card.
Or a credit card agreement. You just wouldn't get through it. I mean, I appreciate that people have read these documents and feel that certain things are potentially coming down the road, but quite frankly, it's unfortunate that a political campaign is being made on an event that has no relation to the funding we received, so...
And there are proper channels to get information in front of us. If those people aren't willing to go through the proper channels, I can't see why we should go out of the way.
Yeah, Richard.
It, it seems to me that what, what the SMART code is, or supposed to be, it's a, a mass of zoning changes. So if somebody wants to introduce the SMART code en masse as a zoning change for 2014, they can introduce it when we do the zoning amendment petitions or the submissions from the board. Would that be correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I, and I think in the past, there have been actually sort of self-composed volunteer groups on both the town and the school side, who have put things forward on both the town and the school side. So that, I mean, that happens, that people get together and work on something and bring it forward.
So if I wanted it done as a citizen, I could put together a petition that said, we propose these changes that we're calling the SMART code, and then just staple the SMART code that was... Is it still online?
It's still online.
Staple that to it, get the appropriate number of signatures, and then it would come before us, and then we could, we could vote on it. Or one of us could do that, and then we could vote on it as part of what we normally do at the close of each calendar year.
Yes.
That's what I meant by the proper channels, which, you know, somebody were to do that, that's, you know, we give it its due...
Translation.
Give it its due respect, of course.
But if what's...
Otherwise, what are we talking about? You know, otherwise...
Well, if you, have you read, I mean, I'm, have you read the contract? Have you read the...
Mm-mm.
Okay. That's what they're talking about. And so as long as, as long as it ends, and as long as it doesn't come back up, there are some locations in town, for instance, that I think that, for planning purposes, the Gothstown Back Road Industrial Park, they're looking to change that. I heard that on economic development meeting on TV, that they're looking to change that zoning to, to...
C.I.F.C.
C.I.F.C.
That's one proposal that...
That's one proposal, and that...
They would like to talk to you about next meeting.
Correct. And I heard them say that on there. So that's one thing. The other thing is, we all know that Shaw's is gone, is not there. We also know that the apartments out in back of Shaw's is right next to Shaw's, and we also know that, that that opens up an opportunity for someone to, like in the book that we had, the picture of all those complexes in that parking lot, may not have been a concept. It may have been a, it may have been a, it may have been a future idea that could be a very real, a very real proposal. So with, with those different areas, I, I know, you know, you might not like to hear that, but the picture was there, and that, I think, those are the concerns that the folks are asking for the vote to, once and for all, end this SMART code, and...
Those pictures had nothing to do with the SMART code. That was part of the plan that we presented with.
That is, I, I understand that, Barbara, but I...
Okay, so don't mix apples and oranges.
Well, when I look at, I looked at Shaw's Plaza, and we saw Shaw's, and we saw some shopping stores out behind a group of apartment buildings that would flow very nicely with the apartment buildings in the back of Shaw's, that I remember passing here last year, that I was, I remember that that wasn't gonna be subsidized, and it wasn't gonna be, it wasn't gonna be workforce, whatever you wanna call it. And it certainly looks like that by the big sign that's on the front gate of it. So I think the, the, the reality is, well, I didn't say no, but, you know, things, things change.
I think you're mixing perception with reality. I mean, some people have a perception, and if they have a perception that they need satisfied, there are proper channels to go through to get that satisfied. I can't see what we could do to convince those people otherwise. And, and even above and beyond that, I think it's politically motivated, and honestly, I think it's a waste of time to keep talking about it.
I, I'm not sure that I agree with that. I mean, Brian called me last week. Why did you call me? I mean, you talked to me, you asked me, we talked for quite a while, and you asked me, should we have a public hearing on this? And I said, yes, I think we should. And now, so, so if that, if it was not a concern, then why would you have called me in the first place? But you did.
It was, it was something that the selectmen had directed me to talk, and so I, I called you ahead of time and just said, hey, you know, this is something that the selectmen are shooting back to us now...
Right.
That, you know, I wanted to run by you. That's it.
Well, they put it in our hands, and our hands are to do something with it.
Well, I'm not gonna make a motion to do anything with it.
My motion to adjourn is still on the table.
Is it really?
I'll second that.
So there will be no public hearing next week, or vote on, I mean, next, in two weeks, on the 24th?
Yeah.
On the SMART code, to address that, through the other zoning changes.
Okay.
All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained.